Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 2021 meeting of the Town of Kent Planning Board. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, have you read the meetings from last month's, the minutes from last month's meeting?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
And could I get a second?
A second.
Giancarlo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
And I vote aye. First on the agenda is Clearpool Maintenance. Liz, this is a public hearing, Liz?
Yes.
You want us to open the public hearing first?
Sure.
She can do her part.
All right, please.
Sorry, just getting this set up a little bit. Good evening, Jamie Lojoudis from Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture, here on behalf of the Clearpool Education Center for the project known as Clearpool Maintenance Building. The property is located at 33 Clearpool Road in the R80 district on a 43.74 acre parcel. The project proposes a 40 by 30 maintenance building with gravel parking outside storage and a small salt shed for storage. The existing property had two previous residential buildings that were demolished as part of the demolition permit. We've been before the board last month. We've addressed some comments from our consultants. So we have some revisions to include on the plans in the next go around that I just wanted to go through with you. For the public and the board, it's a little awkward, sorry. But we do want to make a revision to the plan where the previously shown 10 by 10 asphalt pad in front of the salt storage shed will be increased to 20 by 20 to allow for maneuverability and containment of the salt on the asphalt. We are also going to propose a country curb along the southern edge of that asphalt pad so that anything that would fall on the pad could then be swept up and not run off onto the gravel for additional salt containment. We are going to also increase the berm behind the salt sheds so that we direct any runoff from the back of the property to away from the salt area and not onto the salt storage area. I believe that took care of everything that we went through. But this is a public hearing that we needed to have, so get back to you guys if you have any questions.
Very good, thank you. Liz, do you want to, should I open the, I'm sorry? Nothing?
No.
Can I get a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
And a second? And Giancarlo, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this issue? Sue, please. Please state your name and...
I'm writing. Good evening, Susan Kotzer. I live in the western side of Kent, Kent Cliffs. And I took a ride up there on Clearpool Road. And I looked at the site. And I drove up the road. They have a beautiful road going up to the facility. And on either side, everything is beautiful, the way they have constructed this road. The site is, to me, seems level. I didn't go up there with any leveling devices, but it's a clear area where two former buildings were. And I see no reason why Clearpool should not be able to go ahead with this project. It would only enhance the area even more than it has been already. So I'm hoping this board and the experts agree that they should go ahead. There's nothing wrong with this project. Any disagreements?
Not from me.
Not from you? Great, great. Bruce, you look a little concerned.
Why?
Yes, you do.
I have that ten.
Okay. So I'd like to know...
We're adding certain measures onto there to make sure...
Excuse me?
I said, we're adding certain measures onto the, yes.
What?
So we're adding certain measures into the design, just like Jamie did, for, you know, salt storage and stuff like that. So these are just kind of the outreaches that we'd like to have for the community in case anybody has anything else that they'd like to add into the plans, because there's more knowledge outside in the community than there is on this board. So we'd like to make sure that everybody, you know, has a chance to say, you know, that's what the party, that's why we're having a meeting right now, a public hearing right now.
But if nobody else from the public is coming forward to address these concerns...
We didn't get a check to ask anybody else.
And this young lady, this lady has come up for you and now she's made some revisions to enhance this program, I believe.
Well, why doesn't the board, you know, do what they normally do? See if there's other members of the public...
Right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Bruce, do you want to talk to us? And before you do, everybody who comes up here has to identify themselves before they speak. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bruce Barber, the Town Environmental Consultant. We've been working with Jamie on this project for a little bit. John and I went out and conducted a site inspection. I really have very, very de minimis comments when this happens. We're just checking on the status of the Health Department. I'm sure that's going to be forthcoming. And one of the substantial elements that we talked with Jamie about was the containment of the salt. And she has provided what we discussed with regards to an enlargement of the paved surface, the country curb, as well as the berm to kind of keep the salt in the same location as the shed. And that's really all we have about it. Eventually, the plan should be signed in the survey, signed by a design professional. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Bruce. John?
Good evening. For the record, my name is John Andrews. I'm with Rhodey Slick and Andrews. I serve as the consultant to the planning board. Just to follow on what Jamie said, we had issued an original comment memo on July 7th. She requested it, and we did have a meeting with her on July 22nd. We went through all the comments at that time. And she had a plan with her, and most of the issues had been resolved. As Bruce indicated, the only outstanding item is respect to the salt area. We had a pretty good discussion. And based on what she has described to you this evening, we believe it will be satisfied. The two concerns is we needed an area to allow a truck and a Bobcat front end loader to be able to maneuver. 10 by 10 doesn't cut it, because the turning radius on a Bobcat is 12 by 12. So they needed a little bigger pad, which they have done. The country curb, again, is going to mitigate, keep all the runoff, allow them to sweep it up and get the salt back into the shed once they've done it. We had discussed last time. I am comfortable with moving this to administrative review. Pending the public hearing and given the hue and cry of the public, I'm very comfortable with continuing that recommendation. There are a couple matters that will still need to be done once we see the revised plans and verify that Jamie has done, in fact, what she said. And I have no doubt she has done that. We still need the matter to verify the final bond amount and make that recommendation. But other than that, I believe everything has been satisfied.
Thank you, John.
And just ahead of what John said, I also agree that if the board is comfortable closing the public hearing, that this can go on administrative track. We can handle the t's and cross the i's at that time.
Thank you, Bruce. Gentlemen, you have any questions for any of us?
Just if anybody has anything in public.
Well, it looks like we've crossed the t's and dotted the i's, isn't it? Jamie, do you have any other, or Sue?
I just wanted to give an update on the Health Department. We did reach out to them, so we're just waiting on a letter of no objection for the use of the septic.
Sue, do you, anything else you want to add?
Not really, just thank you for listening to me. That I think this is a, this is a great camp.
All right, good.
It's a plus for Kent.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak about this proposal? Going, going, gone. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? And to move it to administrative track? I will make that motion.
A second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it passes, there you go.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Told you it wouldn't be too painful.
Next is Vitello. And the representative from Vitello told me that Mr. Vitello may call in and have questions. And she will relay the questions and comments from him. And I gave her permission to do that. Could you give us a brief rundown of your project?
Thank you so much for that. I'm Carol Kurth, I'm the architect for the project. We have Eric Schlobam here from Insight Engineering. And we're here to address and further the conversation on revised garage proposal. And I understand there was a field work that Mr. Barber did. There was a whole series of comments. And last night, Insight submitted a response to those comments. We've spent a lot of time taking a look at them and looking at them seriously and trying to find some mitigation and ways to address the items of concern. So I'm going to let Eric take you through those. And hopefully, we satisfy everybody's concerns.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Eric Schlobam, Insight Engineering. The subject project is a single-family home, in addition to a single-family home with detached garage containing an apartment on 475 Pudding Street. The project had previously been approved last fall. We are here today for a field change, for a relocation of the proposed garage. If I can sneak around here. The garage was originally proposed up closer to the house. We've relocated it about 100 feet down the existing driveway. This area is an area that is more desirable to the Vitellos for several reasons. First, the purpose of the garage with apartment is to have, they oftentimes have family join them at Pudding Street. And they need additional space when the family stays, family members say. But also have a place where their guests can have some privacy in a separate building. So the original area was on fairly steep slopes. Many of the slopes were over 25%. The new location has significantly less steep slopes, approximately a significant reduction from 2,400 square foot to 550 square foot of disturbance on slopes over 25%. I know the location is also, the view of the garage and apartment in the new location is, as seen on here, there are some views from the front entryway of the first garage location, which is basically just outside the front entryway. The new location, further down the driveway, kind of blended in with the trees and nature. Again, here from outside, seeing the garage up close, but then also in the new desired location, further away, to improve the views from the house addition. When we first came with this location, after the first meeting, we worked to reduce any impacts. We included a retaining wall to be able to save a few additional trees and reduce the overall disturbance. We also included some, made a change of some, an area of asphalt to porous pavers to be able to reduce any impacts from impervious. The porous areas here. We also eliminated where we had, we're expanding the existing parking area and done some grading in the existing area to the originally proposed garage location to expand that parking that has been returned to just the area that currently exists as their parking area for the house. Since last Thursday's workshop, we have gone out and done additional tree survey that Bruce had requested. That was, I know, sent last night fairly late. That we did get that out to Vera, Bruce, and John. As part of that, there was four additional trees that weren't on the original tree survey that we did identify that would need to be removed. So the, there is an increase of five trees from the approved garage location that would need to be removed. However, we have maintained very close to the original, the limits of disturbance and impervious area to basically bring the, reduce any potential impacts from this change. Since, also since last meeting, we had revised the drainage so that it no longer discharges with a swale that would include grading where there are some trees along the far side of the driveway from the garage. And finally, we also have put together a proposed planting plan to mitigate some of the tree removal. As you can see, there are some proposed trees, shrubs, and ground cover that we are now proposing to plant. There's a mix of 12 understory and canopy trees that are proposed to offset any reduction in any removal of the additional trees.
Do you know what they had about the total acreage and the percent...
Right, that was, another thing was, the project proposes less than one acre of disturbance on a 32-acre lot. The Vitellos also own two adjacent lots totaling over 100 acres. This area of disturbance, less than one acres, less than 1% of their overall property. Vast parts of the property are wooded trees, beautiful trees and beautiful property. So this is a very small impact, even just to the overall scope of their property.
Great, thank you. Liz, do you have comments here? Bruce?
So this plan has modified a few times. Originally, it was in a location more closely located to the home. It was bumped a little bit further away. And now we are about 100 feet down, which is much more remote from the actual principal structure itself. John and I went out and had a look at the new proposed location. And at least in our opinion, we're going from a more managed area on the property where the original garage location was proposed to a more mature wooded area. And part of the reason is that there's a fencing area around this property and this location. So there's an understory that's coming up out of the forest area where there isn't as much deer browse as we see on other properties. So it's kind of a nice area. In looking this morning at what Eric sent last night, what he's done, and I think the chairman was asking about some type of mitigation that might be appropriate to make this work for all concerned. And they have provided trees, as well as shrubs, and a herbaceous layer that is going to be basically offsetting the disturbance into the wooded location. So I think that balancing has been achieved where the property owner is going to achieve what they're looking to do with the project. At the same time, we'll be able to move forward and preserve the natural resources. So I think we're in good shape at that. And I'll let John speak to the drainage.
Great, thank you, Bruce.
Good evening, and again, for the record, John Andrews, Rhodey Slick and Andrews. We did receive a submittal. Interestingly enough, it arrived in my office at 7:44 last night. But it did arrive in my office prior to this meeting. I made the effort to review it. And we had issued a comment memo following the workshop dated August 9th. And the summary chart has been resolved. They're still waiting for Putnam County Health. It's more of a ministerial act. They approved it once, they're not, they just need to, and I think they tweaked the drawings. Not a big deal. You spent a lot of time last time discussing the modifications. Bruce did his analysis, I think, with the photographs. I generally concur with his findings that they've made an effort to mitigate what they're doing. I think the biggest thing from my standpoint is they really took a look at the drainage. And they moved the drainage. And I think this drainage makes more sense. It runs down the road, it discharges. Everything they disturb putting it in is easily restored. And all that nice vegetation that lines the road, particularly on the opposite five from this garage, stays intact. And I think that was my biggest issue. They did, they are proposing a retaining wall. And they have a detail on the drawings now. And they're suggesting it maybe four foot high. But if one carefully reads the borings that they also provide, I got a sneaking suspicion it's not going to get to be four foot high. It's probably going to be two to three foot of exposed rock with a couple rocks on top. So I don't think it's going to be necessarily an issue. It may not even meet the requirements, depending upon how the building inspector reviews it, as needing a building permit. Because in this town, anything over three foot does. But if it's firmly founded on rock to remain and it's only a foot and a half high, decorative, it's not going to be a big deal. So having said all that, one of our recommendations holding over is, if you were comfortable with everything, we would be comfortable moving this back to administrative track. At this point in time, it's really dotting the i's and crossing the t's, making sure all the approvals come in, taking a good final look at the drawings, not the quick one we did today, but making sure everything was there. And I think, to the best of their ability, they have addressed all their concerns. I mean, we may disagree with the homeowner as to impacts, but after all, it's his property. And he's done a good job in making it work. So I think we're ready to move it ahead administratively.
All right, thank you, John. Gentlemen, any questions for anybody?
Phil, just for the board's edification, the pictures that were circulated to you, there was two pictures, just for your edification, there's pictures that were circulated, two were pictures of the former location that was approved, two were pictures that were where the proposed location is. I want to thank Eric for sending two and John Andrews for sending two so that you can have a look at that this evening. I also agree with John in the sense that we've gotten this to the point if the board's comfortable, we can handle that administrative track as well.
Thank you, Bruce. Shall we move it to administrative?
Yeah, with such a large lot, I don't see any issue.
All right, let's take a vote. Shall we move it to administrative?
Yes, I believe we should.
Dennis?
Affirmative.
And I vote yes, too.
Okay, I vote aye.
Any other questions for us?
Bruce and John, thank you for, I know I got that to you late. Thanks very much for taking a look at it so we could move forward today. Thank you.
So to be clear, we're saying yes to the proposed plan. You're going to go over to administrative tracks. There's still going to be, there's still going to be comments by the consultants, but you'll be back on track where you were.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So anyone here for the Friedman and Crossman property?
Hello, good evening. So we've got, this is James Hartford from River Architects, my colleague Carl Hansen, also from River Architects, and John Kallen, our site engineer. So the plan for this is to remove an existing house at 5 China Circle Court and replace it exactly on the same spot with a brand-new passive house, so a net zero house that won't consume fossil fuels. And so in doing so, we're also adding a garage on the property as well that will have some office space above. So we've had a series of comments from the consultants and we submitted a response on July 30th addressing the majority of those comments. Few outstanding issues, like a question about whether the fire department has access to the site. We're currently working on that with the fire marshal right now. So that the chief, so that we can address, work those out with him. So Carl's been in touch with him about that. And otherwise, it's pretty much, you know, has been responded to. And we've submitted this week drawings and the SWIP from John Kallen as well. So I think most of this stuff has been supplied to the board.
Great, thank you. John?
I know you never get tired of hearing this, John Andrews.
You only have to do it once.
I don't know, last time, Bruce, I was told I had to do it all the time, so. But anyway, the gentleman did make a submittal. This has kind of had a checkered history. Their submittals are kind of off sync. So what we agreed is, they got us a submittal. They actually got it to us earlier this week. We made an effort to review it. For the most part, they've advanced their plan and their proposal. There's a couple issues that still are outstanding in my mind. Their response indicated they have not yet had an opportunity to do the soil tests that are necessary for the two infiltration practices that they are proposing. We need that documentation. We will need Putnam County Department of Health approval. They're putting a new septic in for the garage, so that's a pretty critical issue. They've added the notes that we requested. They've kind of resolved basically everything. There's a couple technical details, I think, that need to be buffed a little bit. The two infiltration practices discharge the swales. And they have a detail. And I think the detail needs some additional language so that people know how to get it so that it doesn't jump the other side of the swale and it runs into the swale. There were some notes we had requested regarding long-term maintenance on the SWIP, on the infiltration practices. I could not locate them on the drawing. And then there is this background information, background issue that Bruce and I have probably not been involved in with regard to the fire department access. So it's kind of somewhat news to us. This project has moved along, I think, but it's not yet ready to be moved to administrative track. And I'm not sure it needs a public hearing. But if it does require a public hearing, then my recommendation was, is that you can schedule a public hearing. There is sufficient information to review and allow the public to comment on this application at this time.
Thank you, John. Bruce?
I'm going to ask one of you time folks to have a sheet pulled that shows the elevations or the views from the lake so the board could see that. I'd ask the applicant to provide just some view shed information as to what the house might look like post-construction from the lake to ensure that it's going to kind of fit in with the scheme of things from a natural resource perspective. And so, James, you guys just speak to that a little bit, to the board, and let them know what to do. Anna White here for you.
You're in trouble.
We did a couple photographs of the, from the site. This is actually a picture I took in the wintertime, obviously, across the ice. This is actually a picture I took in the wintertime, obviously, across the ice here. This is the house in question. We're not touching any of the trees that are downhill from the residence, so that shouldn't change the appearance of the house. So this is the same shot, okay, maybe a little further away. But again, here's the house located, you can just barely see it through the trees there. Again, none of these trees will be touched, so it shouldn't change the view at all, how the site is perceived from the public way. I would be glad to bring this up to you for a closer view, if you'd like.
Thank you.
I had a look at the documents submitted this morning also, and I'm happy to report there's coffee on those as well, so I may need another sheet, too. But basically, just a few odds and ends, as John indicated, that this has come quite a ways. We're still looking for information from the health department relative to the proposed septic system. This emergency vehicles, and maybe you could show the board what that's looking like in terms of the crash date, or what you're contemplating. It's a tight driveway coming in with a kind of a 90-ish degreeish turn into some pillars. And so, the thinking is that we just want to make sure that emergency vehicles can come in and out and take care of things there.
So, they're going to be looking to put in a pull-off, or?
Carl's been a little aggressive since he had the conversations.
Okay.
So, I spoke to the fire chief regarding this, and his main comment was because of the tight driveway, in order to provide full, appropriate access for their largest vehicles, it would require quite a large site alteration, which would be detrimental to the existing site. So, I'm in the process of discussing with him an alternative approach, which would be to potentially provide a turnaround area up at the entry of the driveway, and an emergency access through the site fencing, allowing them to go straight down to the site. This is something we'll have to continue discussing, but this is the approach we think would be appropriate for the site without harming the rest of the site in order to make, to give them enough access.
Thank you.
It's really hard to see here, because the roadways are shown very light. But China Court comes down, and then there's this spur that, with a right-of-way for, you know, kind of an extension that our client has access to from there. And there's deer fencing around the property, and the goal is that we would allow, you know, we would provide a gate area here that would be clearly marked and worked out with the first responders, so that there's a place where they can easily just pull up and not actually have to turn or anything like that, so.
Okay, great, thank you, guys. Couple other quick comments, although I know that post-construction practices for stormwater are not required, given the amount of disturbance. What the board has done in the past, and that all of our lakes, to a greater or lesser degree, in Cantor are impaired with phosphorus or have excessive nutrient loading, we've been looking to see if we can improve post-construction conditions by quantifying the fact that there's no actual phosphorus increase coming off the site from when it is currently the case. That's the pollutant of concern presently in our lakes, and so, if that can be done using a simple method or something like that, that John would be much more able to review than I would, but that's what the board's been looking for, to ensure we're not exacerbating those conditions in the lakes. The batteries, is there any storage for the batteries at all?
Like, you mean like a cabinet? No, they're not required to be separately contained. They'll be interior to the house, and depending on the size of the battery system that we put in, we may need to have them, you know, separated by a certain distance as required, but that's, you know, pretty much managed by the Tesla installers.
They're inside.
Yeah, inside.
Okay, great. And that's really about all I have. The only other thing is that I wanted the board to see those elevations from the lake. Oftentimes, there's only three trees that are being mentioned to be cut as part of the proposed project, but people on lakes will, a lot of times, to accentuate the view, limb the trees up fairly high, and that's a common practice. And obviously, that's not anticipated here, according to the applicants. So I agree with John, if the board is willing, that this can be set for the public hearing for next month.
Great, thank you, Bruce. Liz, did you want to add anything here? Can I get, please?
Excuse me. Hi, good evening, everyone. John Kaelin, DC Engineering. I just wanted to key off a couple of comments you guys had, specifically, I guess, regarding the septic. Well, there was originally a proposal for a separate septic for that system. I thought it would be a bit too intrusive in the area. I surveyed the area, and I didn't see enough space to create a septic separate from the original one. So the intent is, we're going to bring a pump station and return that sewage back to the main house, and we're going to enhance the existing system with a soil air aerobic treatment unit. It's an N-Situ soil-type system. And thus doing so, we're going to improve the septic there dramatically. So, a couple of things are going to happen. There's going to be just a water line extension from the house, a force main coming back from the garage to the house, to keep the footprint down in the disturbance in that area that's already being disturbed. The septic's going to be enhanced with the soil air. And while we haven't done soil testing yet, we are scheduled to do that this coming week for the infiltrators. I believe, again, of all the practices that are out there, there aren't too many that are better for this small of a footprint for removing the phosphorus. So, I think between that and what we proposed for the site, and so far as exporting most of the soil, covering the other soils, diverting the runoff around the project, we should be able to mitigate any problems that may or may not arise on the site with, you know, a pretty good plan. Fortunately, it is a small footprint, and there is one, you know, real defined point of egress, so a contractor can't really haphazardly go around the site and muck up the whole place. He's got one way in and one way out. So we can control that and see if something's going to happen pretty easy.
You're going to have to revisit your limits of disturbance, because the way you've got it drawn out there, you've got one pod for the garage, and one pod for the house for disturbance. If you're going to run lines between them, you're going to have to connect that.
Absolutely.
And you're going to need to show the details of this aerobic system.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's going to be the more critical that we get from the county department before we get too far along, because if they say no...
Change the plans, yeah.
Change the plans, and I don't want to interfere.
Exactly, yeah, no problem. We'll speak with Joe and the gang over there real soon, and see if we can get some answers. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. I want to thank the consultants. Glad to have this moving forward. And it's up to you whether we do the, if we go to a public hearing, I'm not sure if that warrants it, but, you know, if necessary, we will. But we would certainly be glad to address anything else administratively.
Great, thank you. Let's schedule a public hearing for next September, the second Thursday in September. Jen Carlo, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too.
I'll make a vote.
Who wants to second this?
I'll second.
All right, there we go. A little backwards, what can I tell you?
September 2nd, that was? That was the 2nd?
No, 2nd Thursday.
2nd Thursday, thank you, good. Thank you. Great, see you then.
All set?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing JPE Auto Repair?
Good evening, Joe Sefrina, Site Design Consultants. We, after our last public meeting, we submitted responses to the consultants' comments. We discussed them somewhat at the work session, and received additional comments, which we began to address. We don't have any particular concerns regarding the comments. I think the only point of discussion that maybe needs to be had, is Liz brought up the parking and storage. We were able to eliminate some of the issues with the parking in the rear, and reoriented, so that we maintain the 30-foot setback. We have the ADA parking space at the rear entrance of the building, and we've shown asphalt, which is required for the ADA space and access area, as well as the pathway to the building, so that we've taken care of that. And we've added some additional information, we've added the proposed signage to the plan, which will go right in place of the signage that was there previously, the road signage, so it'll be the same size as that. And we have a color detail for that, which we will be providing. Lastly, we did determine that the building is served by a private drilled well, and there's a, we got access to the well, and we got access to the interior of the building, where all the storage equipment is for the well, and that the sewage is dealt with by public sewers. There's a public sewer right in front of the property, and the building inspector confirmed that it's connected to the sewer. The route, we don't know. We know where it leaves the building, but we don't know exactly the connection point, but it does connect to the sewer. Otherwise, we're going to complete addressing the comments. We'll get them in probably next week, and for review by the consultants. And if the board is inclined, or if they're required to have us have a public hearing on this, we would hope we could get that scheduled.
Great, thank you. Liz?
Hello, my name is Liz Axelson. I'm a planning consultant with CPL, I'm the board's planning consultant. And, yeah, we had done an initial round of review, did a comprehensive review, and then Joe Rena came back with an informal submittal for the application meetings, and we all started looking at it, saying, "This is great, just make this your application." So, it was a very responsive second submittal, which is, it's just really nice. Most of my comments are fairly minor, straightened up a few things on the plan. I did take a look at the parking. I think the parking is more than sufficient. In fact, there is, hang on, if I can do this. Now I guess I can't. So, there is an extra row, see, this is a customer parking, there is an ADA space, and then there are these two rows of just vehicle storage, you know, for service place. So these aren't customer parking spaces. And then there's this row. And so, you know, when you calculate it for this use, it looks like you need this much parking, but you really, really don't, for the kind of operation that they're proposing to do. It's just repair. We asked all the questions, is there this, is there that, is there convenience stores, is there car wash, is there, you know, oil lubrication services, et cetera, none of that. So it's real simple business. This one happens to be in a side yard setback, so I'm recommending that that just be deleted. And what I did was, I wrote into my review memorandum that the planning board can grant, and I recommend that you grant, at the right time, not tonight, a waiver of the parking requirement, based on what's provided here. So most of my comments are pretty minor. We should hear from Bruce and John. And the end of my memo basically says, and I believe Bruce and John are in agreement, that the remaining comments be addressed, and that I think the board has enough information now to make a referral to Putnam County Planning Department, and also to set a hearing for next month. This is a type-two action under SEACRA, which means it does not need any further SEACRA review, so.
Thank you.
We did issue a comment memo, based on Joe's submittal, Mr. Rena's submittal, pardon me. There's some technical issues that we're still waiting for. The applicant is just that, the applicant, they're not the property owner. We need signed documentation from the property owner. I guess Mr. Rena has indicated that's somewhat akin to pulling teeth, so, but that remains to be submitted. I think we're still looking for the deed.
That we're still looking for.
And they're waiting on that. They've amended the EAF, addressed those issues. Joe has verbally indicated to us, they've kind of solved the water and sewer location issues. We just need to see the, you know, the documentation of that on the plans. They did a nice job of relocating everything to the, essentially, the back of the site, behind the building, the parking spaces. And I brought this, the only real issues that I brought up was the one last time, where there is, on the back of the property, I think you're all familiar with it, there's, you can see there's a deed parcel D and a deed parcel C. And it appears as though there's kind of like poorly-defined parking, and some other things that seem to be associated with a neighbor next door. Unfortunately, they're shown on this plan. And these folks are not asking for, and have no control over, and are not dealing with that. So I'm suggesting, and subject to Liz's concurrence, to just simply put a note on the plan that basically says, "Look, these things exist. There's no approval issue, they have no approval. If anything changes back there, you've got to come back to us at approval. What we're approving is on parcel B up front, and that's what matters." And I think it's a fairly simple, straightforward thing, and it gives the building inspector and future enforcement agencies the ability to go back there and say, "Hey, look, you've got no approval, you're doing something back there, come see us." And then, the last item is just, I concur with what Mr. Rena did, he kind of moved the parking to the back. You need an impervious surface for a handicap. He put in a little impervious. As far as I'm concerned, what's out there, if you see it, it's essentially impervious. So, even though they're adding asphalt, which is typically seen as disturbance, I don't consider that, I consider it a trade-off. You're just adding impervious to existing impervious, much like you're patching an asphalt pad. I think this is ready to move forward, and if, between now and that meeting, if most of the issues can be resolved, so long as there's no big public issues, I think we can move this along relatively rapidly after that fact.
Thank you, John.
I have really very few comments, and it's an important distinction John just made, in the sense that the mapping of the property, the soil mapping of the property identifies approximately the front third of the property, the most closely located to Route 52, as being wetland soils. However, John and I went out and looked at the property, and it has basically been filled in years ago, and it's now a compacted impervious surface. And thus, the applicant is proposing for the handicap parking to install some asphalt impervious surface on an existing impervious surface, with really no net change and resulting land disturbance. As a result, I'm recommending to the board that a wetland permit for that action is not required. There is no land disturbance associated with this application, and to warrant a wetland permit from the town. I have a couple of the very minor items, one on the EAF regarding stormwater, and copy of the deed that John mentioned, and also, I think you found this out, Joe, it's not in the DEP, Main Street does mention. Okay, so, I also concur with the other consultants, that this is, if the board approves, ready to go to public hearing for next month.
Thank you, Bruce. Do you have anything else to add? Any questions?
Yes, I would like to talk to Liz. I'd like to talk to Liz. So, site plan waiver, approval waiver, and I want to talk about change of use, and what we're coming down to, and change of use on the property on this part, because we actually don't change occupancy class of the building to structure. We're not actually constructing, creating, changing, modifying, to structure in any sort of way. So I want to talk about how we're getting to the point that we actually need a full site plan approval for a business which is relatively similar to the business that was there and that was existing. I understand the need for a sign, and sending that out to the public, and everybody approve what signage is going out there, but we've had a rental shop that fixed and repaired gasoline engines. He's going to put in a shop that's going to fix gasoline engines for customers. It's really relatively simple. They had customers coming to the other business, it was open to the public, that did not change. We're adding parking, we understand that, that's very much, you know, the ADA compliance, you're getting everything up and putting together an outline where they're going to be parking, it's relatively easy, so we can understand what they're planning to do with the property. But from that standpoint of really... But from that standpoint of really never changing anything with the structure that requires an NFPA occupancy change is kind of, it's tough to handle, so.
Okay.
I was wondering if we could waive the, as we got here, we have a potential for a site plan approval waiver.
No. The information I gave you at the beginning of this meeting that's highlighted in yellow?
Yes.
That is language from the Town of Poughkeepsie code zoning.
Okay.
And it is in response to this concern that you're expressing now?
Yes.
Which the board has expressed before. And I had, so now I'm just going to talk about zoning right now. So I had mentioned to you that the Town of North Salem had had a site plan waiver language because I'd written it and I was their director of planning when they adopted it. And I went to their code and I couldn't find it. So I started looking around in different codes, and I finally landed on the Town of Poughkeepsie. And so that was just a few days ago that I grabbed that piece and brought it to you as a sample because you've expressed this concern before. So that is something to look at and deal with. But that sample doesn't give you the authority to do that tonight. So you understand that-
So if it's not in our code-
It's not in your code.
So how would we have the authority?
You don't have the authority.
No, you wouldn't have it if it's not, so by not stating it's not there doesn't mean you can't do it. By telling you you can't do it says you can't do it. By not being in the code doesn't mean you can't do it. There's tons of things out in America that you can go do that aren't by a law. There's only laws restricting what you can't, basically tells you what you can't do.
Well, let me just be clear. We don't interpret the code. We read it, we do our reviews according to the code. We don't make anything up, none of us do. The code right now in the Town of Kent, the thresholds for site plan review are very, very low, meaning any little change, in fact, one of the lines reads, "A change from a conforming use to a conforming use requires site plan approval." So the issue isn't-
Well, no, but see, I understand that. But if you're changing the type of use, I agree, I 100% agree with that.
This was a rental property, and now it's going to be an automobile repair.
It is a, it is a, was a repair shop.
Prior to that, it was a repair facility for small engines.
Yeah, they sold small engines, and they rented small engines, and they repaired them, and they rented them out to the customers.
Sold tank stalls, leaf blowers, wood chippers.
Yep. My understanding, the way that this was presented from the building department and from the application review at the meeting was that it was a change of use. So that's why we did site plan review. I mean, I can go back and look, but I'm quite sure that this thing required site plan review according to your existing code. And the reason that I brought you that sample is to address this concern that you're expressing, so.
I just want to revisit this. We have no ability to interpret it. The building inspector, zoning enforcement officer is really the first line.
Yep.
Our understanding, his interpretation was, this was going from the rental shop, which was just at a rental shop, to an auto repair facility. In his mind, that was a change in use. Now, once it's decided to be that way, your code is fairly specific, and as Liz says, it has a very low threshold. It doesn't make much sense. Now, there's two things you can do. You can re-appeal to the building inspector and ask him to revisit this. And if he says it doesn't need site plan approval, and he's willing to grant a permit for the work, we pass go, we collect $200. I don't know whether he's going to do that, but he's the only one, and he's not here with us tonight, has that authority.
I think it's a determination of the code enforcement officer by the ZBA.
Well, and then the next, if he doesn't agree, the applicant has the right to go to the ZBA and ask the same question. The long and short of it is, I agree with you 100%.
Look, we're going to have this again in a few weeks. We're going to have this again with Kent Plaza with-
Yep, we're going to have it again and again, and that's why-
You're going to keep coming down.
When Liz and Bruce and I met at the last consultants' meeting, we are very sympathetic because this, and you are not the only town that faces it, other towns we work in does the same thing. So Liz did a nice job of grabbing that from the Town of Poughkeepsie. I've benefited from that in the Town of Poughkeepsie for clients of mine. So what I would suggest to you is, and please forgive me, I don't usually say this, let's hustle this application up, get it over, and then write a letter to the town board, attaching language that you are comfortable with, and say, let's get this adopted in the code for the following reasons. And I would suggest to you, that is the quickest way to resolving it. Because it's going to take, only the town board can make that amendment, it's a relatively simple amendment. And if it's crafted properly on its way to them, and you folks are comfortable with it, they ought to be able to rapidly move it ahead. But it's not going to help the instant application, I'm sorry.
And what you're not trying to do, we want to make sure that we can try to speed it along, that's why I even recommended that we get-
We have.
And- Oh, wait a minute. I'm just, I'm just got a feeling we're going to be doing this exact same thing. We're talking about, DOT is going to be coming down from, coming down, they're not going to make any construction, they're not doing anything, it's going to be moving from one suite upstairs to downstairs into an existing, what is it, retail location. Now it's going to be an office. Yet again, you're not changing, you're not changing firewalls, you're not adding HVAC, you're not, you're just not bothering-
And the easiest thing to do is, I've seen waiver language like this crafted, and it's a two-step process. In other words, the building inspector would have the first crack, and he'd say, no, doesn't need to be. But if he says, hmm, maybe, it comes to you, and you folks can say yea or nay. So depending upon how we draft this, is, it's going to be, but ultimately, your code must be changed to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
I just was making sure that it wasn't hitting thresholds that we could waiver it. So if it wasn't making the thresholds that's requiring the site plan, that's where we're- No, no. Steve?
Steve, I think that we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah.
And we're all agreeing with you. And the key is that Liz was able to dig this up and have a look at it, see if it fits what you're thinking could be done to facilitate this process, especially commercial properties, especially sewered commercial properties, for goodness sake. So have a look at it, and then we need a recommendation to go to the town board, they would then implement it, and we'd be going to the races. Okay? We're on the same page.
And then it shouldn't take more than a few years.
Yeah, okay. So right now, the best thing to do for the applicant here is set a, is set a public hearing for next month. So that way we can keep this moving, that way we can get put onto ministry-
And to do the referral to the county.
And ensure until?
239M referral to-
Okay, yeah.
What's that, Vera?
Joe already sent it to Putnam County.
No, we already did.
You did that already?
Yeah. I think yesterday or the day before.
Well, then can I get a motion to set a public hearing for next month, the 2nd Thursday?
I'll make that motion.
On our 2nd. And how do you vote, Giancarlo?
I vote aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It's too late, it passed.
It's not too late. To be technically correct, even though it's already occurred, please, for the record, authorize a submittal to the county, and then that way it's belt and suspender.
Yep.
Can I get a motion to refer this to the Putnam County Planning Board?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
And how do you all vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Just another question, is it customary to have a resolution of approval the same night as a public hearing? Is it possible?
That would be up to, that would be up to Liz. Would we, you have a resolution ready for next month?
I can. It's easy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any further questions for us?
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. But please understand, we're not trying to beat you guys, beat up the consultants, we are just trying to make sure we're moving these applications along and trying to alleviate any of the bottlenecks we can, especially these low line, these low threshold projects that we can just turn over.
Just to be clear, it's really important, I know that Neil Wilson's that looks at the code, and Bill Walters looks at the code, but I really think it's a good idea, if you guys look at the threshold for site plan now.
Yeah.
And you'll see, there isn't anything that really escapes, which is-
No, the only thing I saw was-
That's why you need this.
The only thing I saw was on the use, is that the use is the term use. And the use has changed, that it just really comes along, basically leading up to occupancy, that you're really changing something, you know, that's being done, that's something that's different.
You'll see, you'll see in this language that it gives you the authority to look at these criteria.
Yep.
And then I really think, you know, this, this probably was written by Neil Wilson. Because he wrote a lot of the code of the Town of Poughkeepsie. It's great language, I can provide it for you in Word for Windows, and you guys could just, you could take it to the town board.
Yeah. Well, I'll draft it up and send it to Phil.
Yeah.
If you could send me the language.
Yeah, I can send you that as Word.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. We're up to Joe's Quick Mart Folding Sign Company.
Hi. Good evening, Brian, I'm Connor Folding Sign. Tonight, we're appearing in front of the board. The Speedway gas station, the convenience mart is changing, rebranding to Joe's Quick Mart. So basically, we're requesting approval to change the monographics over the front entrance to Joe's Quick Mart. And then there's a small panel on the freestanding sign to replace the panel again to read Joe's Quick Mart. And that's the entire application.
Thank you. Consultants?
So I took a look at the, these are quite detailed sign plans that were provided with dimensions and everything. Both the facade sign that's underneath the canopy, it's existing, they're just replacing the image, same, same exact dimensions, et cetera. And also, I actually stopped near the sign today, so basically, right now, there's a synergy panel at the bottom of that existing freestanding sign, and it's just going to be replaced with the Joe's Quick Mart panel. So based on these sign plans prepared by Fast Signs dated, oh, June 14, 2021, the planning board could grant sign approval. There's no changes in lighting or location or anything. So you could do a very simple approval.
And this is what we did for the 7-Eleven change card?
Pretty much. Replacement of existing facade sign and replacement of an existing panel on a freestanding sign.
Okay, and I think we waived the public hearing on that, or did we go to-
There's no public hearing on signs. You could just, just do it nice and simple.
Okay.
Any questions, anyone? Can I get a motion to accept this sign approval? I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do it, get it done.
Is there anyone here for Ananziata Smalley Corners? Mr. Correll?
Who it is?
What do you think? Jack? You saw this application previously. Renewing this Health Department approval for maybe 20 years. And of course, it expired again, we're going to have to do it again. And I apologize, I left out the one of the detail sheets, which a lot of your comments were relative to that. We're asking for a waiver of driveway slope up to 15%. And we're asking for a waiver to provide a tree survey. The property is seven acres in size, fully tree. We are disturbing about three quarters of the acre with a fire river right. We're going to be removing trees, having to go in there. Septic system in the house is pretty well defined. There were some comments on stormwater. This project is in the woods, it's a single-family house, long driveway. Under the state regulations, you don't have to treat water. We intend to allow stormwater to sheet flow off of the driveway. And we'll be discharged off the house to riprap swell. Discharged off the house to riprap swell. One of the suggestions was, we talked to Rich Off Group, the highway superintendent, to discuss how we're going to treat water, keep it off the road. There was one comment about an easement for that drainage, intimate drainage ditch. I don't know where that came from, I mean, I don't know where you guys found it, but I couldn't find it.
It's on a survey.
My sur, our survey?
The survey had come from Jerusalem, it's really not a downtown guy.
Really? I looked this afternoon, I couldn't find it. Who did this, Donato did the survey?
Just for the record, I'll read out loud what Mr. Correll was just looking at. Note number three on the property survey provided with this project states, "The property is subject to an easement in favor of the seller and his heirs and assigns for the construction, installation, and maintenance of a pipe and swales for drainage purposes as indicated on subdivision map 2248A. Said easement to be 25 foot in width." So what I had requested is a copy of filed map 2248A, so that we understood what it's all about and they get that incorporated in his design.
Great. That survey was prepared to give us additional topo along the roadway. I'm sorry, I didn't see, I didn't read that note. I'll get a copy of the filed map and see what that says. It doesn't say who the easement is to or from, but I'll take care of that.
We have had a couple of looks at this. Julie and I went out and looked at the property back in October. This drainage swell in question is an area that traverses the base of the slope, kind of about a third way into the property from the road. It does not meet the requirements of a jurisdictional water course pursuant to the Kent Code, so it's not a wetlands, but it is a conveyance system, obviously. It's taking water from an uphill property, bringing it across this property, and it leaves to go to lower sections of the land. So it's important that that be maintained. And one of the comments we had for Jack, we're aware that the amount of disturbance does not necessitate post-construction stormwater practices, but we're concerned about the driveway draining down into that drainage swell and increasing flow off property to an adjoining property, as well as perhaps pollutant loading as well. And then once you're from the swell down to the road, there's a dip, and we just want to make sure the drainage does not go out onto the road, causing icing conditions and dangerous conditions, stuff like that. So, you know, we're looking to see if that's something that can be addressed in this next submittal. I have some additional review comments. There is off-site Bailey Brook, and there are also some sun loam soils. They may be far enough off-site that the 100-foot wetland setback does not reflect onto the subject property, but we would ask they be shown on a larger scale drawing with 100-foot setback, just to make sure we don't have any wetland buffer issues reflected from those off-site resources. When I went out to the property, there's an awful lot of mature trees out there. Based upon my inspection, I would suggest that the board would request a tree survey within the proposed limits of disturbance, as well as 50 feet outside pursuant to the town code. There's just an awful lot of tree out there. There are a lot of steep slopes, wondering if there's going to be a need for rock hammering or blasting. If so, what the duration of the rock hammering or excavation would be. If so, what the duration of the rock hammering or excavation would be, and how that might comply with the noise ordinance. Well and septic system approvals have been obtained, but we have not provided documentation. We don't have the paperwork yet. And then there's just a few other odds and ends. And again, it gets back to the survey and the deed and what have you. There's a, an indication that there's a 4.24% interest in lot number nine. And then the deed also indicates that the subject property is commonly known as Section 21 Block 1 Lot 11, and Section 21.13 Block 1 Lot 19. We're not sure if there's two separate tax maps, if they've been merged, if they have not been merged and the sites are subsized. According to zoning, they should be merged, so we need some information about that as well. The site itself doesn't meet lot frontage and lot width requirements. The absence indicating that it's a pre-existing condition, we just need confirmation from the, uh, code enforcement officer. We spoke about the drainage in the driveway and the survey in Bailey Brook. Some additional information about the easement would be needed. And then just a few comments relative to the EAF. And, uh, that's where we are right now.
Thank you, Bruce. John, do you have more?
If I may?
Of course.
Yes. Um, Bailey Brook crosses the, is, is 200 feet north of the, of the north property line, and it crosses across Smalley's Corners Road, and it's like 600 feet back off of Smalley's Corners Road.
Right. So if that can just be reflected on the site, but also associated with Bailey Brook is the sun soils, which the town code identifies as hydroxic or wetland soils, and that comes towards the property. So if you just show that, Jack, where they are on a larger plan, that way we can make sure that there's nothing reflected from those offsite wetlands onto the subject property.
All right. Okay. One more thing. That 4.24% interest in lot 9, lot 9 is the, is a, is a separate tax parcel that contains Upper Lake Nittany. So I think that what that means is, they have a right to utilize that tax parcel for swimming, boating, whatever.
Could be, yeah, I just need clarification.
Because it's just the same.
It might be. Might be.
Okay. Um, to reiterate what Bruce said, this was previously reviewed by Julie. Uh, she issued a memorandum back in October of 2020. A lot of the, the minor technical details still need to be resolved. Um, and I'm, uh, when Mr. Correll said that a, a sheet had been admitted, omitted, I would be, uh, inclined to believe that, because the stuff was on the original, needed to be buffed a little bit, and it wasn't on the resubmittal. So I suspect there was a slip between that submittal. So I'm willing to take that. But there are a couple of issues, um, that, that I think we do need to focus on. Um, the first is, is the driveway. The grading and the driveway profile don't seem to match. And, um, as a consequence, it, it's kind of hard to figure out, Jack, as we, Mr. Correll has requested a waiver of the 15%. But if you look at the driveway, the driveway's graded at 10%. So I, I need to, I need some clarification. So that needs to be done. And then when it comes to the, the driveway profile, he, he's got it pitched back away from the town road. Nice thought, but when you look at the surrounding topo, it creates a ponding area. There's no, there's no place for the water to go. So that's why, if you remember in the correspondence, you might have seen an email exchange with, with the highway superintendent. He and I will probably need to meet out there with, with Mr. Correll and figure out how we want to treat the end of that driveway, to make sure that we protect the town road. We do need some cross-sections, because he's got some retaining walls, and the driveway kind of is a little funky. And then there's this, there's this easement. And, um, they propose a 15-inch culvert. But this drainage ditch runs across this property, starts on the property next door, runs across this property, and goes to the property downstream. Um, I need some justification for the sizing of that culvert. In other words, if we're going to put a driveway over it, is 15 the right size, or does it need to be a 30 because of the contributing area? And when you couple that with the note, the last thing you want to do is, is have a driveway that every time it, it rains, it's overtopped. So, um, I do need some additional details on that. And other than that, most of the other stuff is, is, um, the belt and suspenders and kind of technical, change this note, get this updated, but, uh, those are the key issues. Getting the driveway to match the profile and understanding that drainage.
Thank you, John. Questions, anyone? Do we have any actions we need to take, Liz?
Resubmit.
I'm sorry?
Resubmit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because he's missed, they're missing documentation, so they need a resubmittal.
So we don't have to do anything?
No.
You have any further questions for us?
Um, no, I'll find out about the easements, and I'll meet with, uh, John and with, uh, Bill and Dick Offner, uh, about the drainage. Uh, yeah, we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
All right. Who's working below the line tonight?
Get to it.
So this is going to be a little bit of a team effort. So, um, this is about Holly, and I need to just tell a little bit of a story, which you all have in your inbox as of June 4th. So as you know, the planning board had spent some time, including an attorney-client privilege meeting, going over a proposal for the Holly Winkler property. And, um, based on that, um, Bruce and John and I put our heads together and made some revisions to a draft stipulation that Jeff Battistoni had prepared on behalf of the planning board, and, um, brought it back to the planning board. And it looked like a pretty agreeable, doable, reasonable, uh, stipulation. And so we conferred with Jeff to find out, what do we do next? It seemed like it was okay with the planning board. We thought, well, we need to send it to the town board for them to look at. And then the other part was, well, we should, we should definitely send it out to the applicant's folks, so they can take a look, agree to it, so we can move this thing forward. And, um, kind of surprisingly, instead, what came back was, um, what I was a little surprised about the increase. Before, they were going to add five dwelling units to seven already on the site, bringing it up to 12. And, um, now they're adding 12 dwelling units, bringing the total up to 19.
Should we just send it back to them and say, we, we, we told you this is what it is?
Well, that's one option, I believe. I think that's an option.
I'm going to, I'm going to be candid with you. I don't understand, and I don't know the players, but what happened was, you got a rather nebulous submittal back early in the, early in the year. If you remember, it looked like it was on the back of a napkin. Put, put unit here, so to speak. And, um, that was their proposal. And then you had issues with regards to the stipulation and, and what happened legally, and what they were entitled to, and so on and so forth. Jeff and, Jeff did all his research. We came up with a process. Then, um, we got a nice letter from them that said, hey, we did some testing, and based on the Board of Health, we're changing our plan. We're now going to put three, four-unit buildings in, ex, ex. So, um, okay. Now, bear in mind, we have never seen an updated plan, we have never seen anything. So then, we all crafted this beautiful stipulation, which said what their original application said. Was given to the applicant, the applicant made some revisions, and he did what he was supposed to do, but that's not the way you revise a, a stipulation such as that. We needed to add some whereas, as you need to maintain the continuity of thought. So I took it upon myself, amended it, I think I circulated it to folks. And then, that's when, when you start to add up all the numbers, the numbers get relatively high all of a sudden.
Almost tripled, I think.
And so, um, they're still below what the original settlement was, but that doesn't apply. Got an interesting email from Vera today, just on bringing the story full circle, where Vera says that the owner stopped in, and, um, he wants to make sure you understand, he's adding these 12, you know, these 12 additional units on top of the seven that are already there, that's how we get to 19. And oh, by the way, DEP's going to let you know that we're okay with septic. And, um, I, I was completely puzzled by reading it, because I haven't seen Plan One. You haven't seen Plan One. So in my mind, and based on the instructions that we were provided with from your attorney, Jeff Battistoni, you do not pass go, you do not go anywhere until this stipulation is signed by all parties. You, the owners, and the town board. And unless and until that occurs, everything else is fairy dust. Um, and as a consequence, um...
Well, it can keep changing. It can keep changing.
It can keep changing, so...
It doesn't matter until we actually have it.
And, and I got to be honest with you, they're, they're expending a tremendous amount of your time, and, and don't seem to get what the process needs to be.
Is there any good reason for us to accept the way they've changed the stipulation? No, that's what I thought. So, I mean, I think we...
Well, we can't, we can't accept it until we see it.
No, but I'm just saying, if it was a better plan than the one...
But we'll have a plan. We, I'm saying, they could put, they could put, for, for Holly chairs, if they put 19 more units on there, I just want to see what they're proposing.
Right, but even the way they described it.
But you could put all into one building.
So I, I think we should just send a letter back to them and say, you've gone in far, or whatever it is.
We've thrown enough words to snarl at sea from...
Basically...
We just need someone to respond.
You need a, you need a picture that is not a cartoon drawn on the back of a napkin. You need a head... Now, if, if I'm led to believe what they say, they've had an engineer out there, who we don't know. If they're doing septic tests and people are proving it, they've had the Board of Health out there. And if I'm not mistaken, in this town, you need DEP pressing. So somebody's got to have something on paper. And I, I get the sense that they think that you're just going to say, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, call us when you're done, get a building permit. That's not happening.
No.
Can't happen.
We got nothing to work with.
Nothing to work with. So what I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is not you folks, but I would have your attorney craft a letter, very simple, straightforward, that says, look, thank you very much for all this, but unless and until we get a picture, a plan, that bears some reasonable resemblance of what exists and what you propose, we're not going one step further. Thank you very much.
No, that's good.
We can't.
Can't. So that would be my recommendation, and, um...
Vera, could you draft such a letter?
Well, he wants Jeff to do it.
I think Jeff...
Well, I mean, to Jeff, a letter to...
Yeah. Oh, we just emailed Jeff.
That's what I...
Yeah, this...
So that would be my recommendation.
Do you want to email Jeff? Do you want me to do it? Okay. You go. Okay.
Yeah, because we have no idea where, where you're laying it out, but what proposing, I, we can't look at anything. How could you look at anything?
Well, nothing substantiated.
Yeah.
Nothing substantiated. And again, keep in mind that the reason that Jeff ever came up with this in the first place is he scoured whatever court documents he could find, um, to find the stipulation in open court referencing the materials provided by Mr. Bradley. Um, and he couldn't find it. So then the idea was, look, we're not going to be able to find this definitive document, apparently, and the folks that are interested aren't, don't seem to be able to produce it, so let's come to a stipulation. That was the idea, let's find a middle ground. So there isn't, it's, this is a very odd process. There really isn't a reason for the board to move beyond...
No.
Okay.
No, and we're not, we don't want to obstruct them, you know?
No.
We want to, we want to process their application, and that's what we're supposed to be doing, is processing their application.
Well, they don't have an application. Keep in mind, he said, Mr. Bradley noted the intention of the inquiry at the application review meeting, that's all there's been, was, that's an informal meeting to inquire whether and how the applicants might be allowed to build five more dwelling units. That was their whole premise. Five more dwelling units. So it was an inquiry, it led to a court's, you know, document search, and a very reasonable suggestion from the attorney based on that...
Well, it might not be, it might not be an application fee because of court stipulations, I'm not sure, but we should get an application.
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing to apply for.
Yeah. Well, like the application plan, you got to get through all, you got to go through all the steps.
The use isn't allowed in the zoning district, that's, that's why there's no application.
Yeah, I don't know what the stipulation's on, you know, fees and stuff like that, because some of that might weigh for...
Right. It's all escrow, I think.
Okay. So we have a plan with, dealing with that one.
Right.
Um, I can take the next two. Zucker, Zucker is essentially finished. I, I went out there with Bruce, we looked at it. Um, I issued a memo. We needed a letter from their engineer and an as-built. We have received that. I think the date on that letter was July 27th. That starts the two-year clock. So two years from now, you can return their bond. They have the right, if everything survives the winter, to come back to you after one winter, since it's a residential home, but that's on them. So as far as I'm concerned, you could actually almost remove Zucker, because it's, it's at the point now where it's, it's just got to wait for its time. Rannieri, um, that was another submittal that we had gotten from, uh, Mr. Correll. That one has a really checkered history, has a couple, uh, garage doors that you could drive buses through that are not yet filled, um, in, in terms of information. Um, most of it's property-related. If you recall, it was going to be on an agenda, and then again, interestingly enough, coincidentally, Bob Bradley is involved. And Mr. Bradley said, I'd like to pull it from this agenda, because Jack Correll was on vacation. Well, Jack is obviously now back, and we don't have any updated information, he is in possession of our comment memos, so it, that's kind of like a limbo project. And that's all I need to do.
What's next? What's the next item?
52. 52 port, Zada.
Okay. So I, I need to, uh, grab a microphone. And, um, so I think this one is almost ready to go. The only thing I need to show you, um, and I'm just going to try to pop it up here, if you guys can share it. This is the 2006 plan that was approved and signed, et cetera, okay? The application that's in front of us now was to change an occupancy use. And so I took a look at the plan they were putting forward and made a few comments, because what happened is, um, the, see the line of evergreen trees? Those were approved in 2006. They were never put up. There are a couple apple, crabapple trees there instead. And this plan doesn't show them, so i- if, if we sign this plan, it means we're doing away with those trees. Now, I've driven by, I've looked at it on Ariel. The next property over is GADF, which is owned by the same owner, you've already seen that. And so I just want to make sure that the board is okay with the plan that basically eliminates those pine trees. And then I can do a sign-off.
It's tough when you own the next door in a lot, because you can't say you're shielding the next door neighbor if you're, the next door neighbor is you.
And it's a commercial district, what?
It's the only difference.
That's the only difference. Everything else, they straighten out as I asked them to do.
There were crabapple trees?
Yeah.
Well, get us a set of current plans that we can...
Well, this is, this is a current set of plans, it just doesn't have the pine trees. And I've already asked for them a couple times, and they basically are saying, look, we own the next parcel, and we might want to make a connection between these two, so we don't want to put up the pine trees. So that's their reasoning. I don't think it's completely ridiculous. And so if you guys are okay with bye-bye to the pine trees, then I can authorize this new plan with the amended occupancy to be signed.
Do we need to vote on that?
Um, you could do a simple vote.
I don't, I don't even know if you can vote on it. It's just a, it's just a...
As long as you're okay with those trees going away. Fine.
Are we?
I'm good.
I'm okay with the easement.
Bruce?
Commentary's good.
Yeah?
Done deal.
Well, I don't want to have trees removed, because, you know, because that's what these things come down to, is that, okay, now we're going to remove our trees and put in...
Well, they do, well, since 2006 anyways.
No, but they have crabapple trees there, so they'll remove the crabapple trees to comply.
We'll be putting a couple one footers.
So it's just going to be like this. This is good.
We're going to spend $100,000 on some trees in two years, and now we're going to dig them all out, right?
That's it, that's all.
Uh-huh. Okay. All right. Gad?
GADF.
Yeah, that's you.
Should have been signed.
Yeah, should be done.
What's that?
GADF.
The one that we were just speaking about, that's a next door, that should be signed already. Because I signed off on that one.
Vera, you have something to sign?
Sign-off memo.
All right.
Route 52, nothing happening. Kent cell storage.
They got the report.
Yep.
Rodriguez, nothing new. Rodriguez, nothing new. And last but not least, we received via email authorization from the town supervisor pursuant to the town board, the three of us to start work on the mining law. So we're hopefully getting some information very shortly to the board and, uh, keep working on that. Okay.
Thank you, Bruce. Questions, anyone? Vera, any questions?
No.
Paul, any questions? Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
And a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aight. Thank you, everyone.